You know, you're feeling infection and.
And Felicia has chapped in the school.
Good issue. I don't have this here problem.
Like months later and there's nothing they can do about it.
Mm hmm.
And you have that same symptoms. Hi.
I've had. But I've had COVID three times. So. Um, this one feels way felt way different. This was all had.
Um. Okay. Oh, I'm not on, sorry. Okay, okay. Test, are you gonna test everybody? Are we good? You can hear us? Okay. Oh.
No.
Okay, so, ready?
Number three, four.
All right. What's up? No clock in this room. I know we're just saying this. There's no clock in this room. Okay, I would like to call the City of Talent Planning Commission to order on July 23rd at 6:33 PM. A roll call?
Uh, Chair Riley is absent. Uh, Vice Chair Shapiro?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hazel?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Damato?
Here.
Commissioner Volkart?
Here.
And Commissioner Clark?
I'm here.
Great.
All right, you have quorum.
Um, are there any brief announcements by staff?
Uh, I have, well, the only announcement that I have is, uh, our other planner, who are we talking about? Um, she's still out on the schedule, I believe. Uh, we were actually supposed to go over some of the, uh, mask number draft amendments today, originally. Uh, now they're gonna be part of the COVID case, which is why Moncler helped. Uh, she was supposed to leave that once she's been out. Uh, we're going down to wish that some kind of, uh, when she needs it, so we'll August or September. So, just because that, um, she's supposed to be back sometime in the spring or autumn.
Okay.
Uh, but that's really the only, uh, new for that.
Okay. Um, approval of minutes. Should we take each one separately?
I only have one proposed change, so.
Okay.
So I don't know that we do need to do that, but.
So just.
We could probably do them as a group if you would entertain it.
Okay.
Proposed change on.
So we need a motion to approve?
No. First, I was gonna ask. Uh.
Okay, so what?
Yeah, so, um. Uh, you probably, we probably have absences though, right, that will throw this off, right?
What was that?
I think everybody.
Say that again, Mark.
I would think that everybody was present at most of these except for the one where we didn't have a quorum.
Oh.
Correct, that's just the.
Okay, great. Maybe we can just tackle them as a group.
Okay.
And then I've just got the one proposed change and maybe other changes, but.
Okay.
On the January 23rd minutes, um, on, um, five, six, uh, Roman numeral five, six point two. Um, there was just. I think Nick was capturing the discussion pretty well, but it got a little confusing. I just wanna strike one line because it it sort of takes the meaning of what I was getting to away from what I was getting at. On the requirement for applicants to plant street trees and then the simultaneous requirement not to plant street trees as to damage infrastructure. If we could just strike the line, quote, but they can't based on utility lines, which is the last part of that six point two. Um, I think that would would not contradict where I was going with that comment that I made and, uh, because what I was suggesting is that they have to plan and figure out how to plan and actually the applicants acknowledge that. That's why they were trying proposing moving the planting location. So we can just strike that. I'm all good with that.
Okay.
And thanks for, uh, waiting and delaying that just to, I knew, I realized it read a little funny and I just wanted to make sure that it was capturing. Even though the audio does that perfectly, but.
Okay.
Well, maybe it doesn't matter, but yeah, any. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So the last line you wanna strike is? Um, a burden on the applicant?
No, but they can't based on utility lines.
Okay, so, uh, stated they need to plant street trees, period. Then strike the last portion of that sentence. But they can't based on utility, yeah, that's.
Right. Yeah, and so just, just, I just wanna make a comment on that. And so Nick and I were talking before on it and because the way I read the code is that, um, an applicant is required through landscaping plan to plant street trees. And then part of the other code says, hey, don't, you can't plant street trees if you're gonna damage infrastructure. And so that doesn't absolve an applicant from planting street trees. It just means you need to plant them in a way that doesn't damage the infrastructure. And rather than asking for, um, a waiver to plant street trees, so, yeah. But anyway, thank you for your patience on that.
Okay.
And then, oh, I'll make a motion.
That's great.
Um. I moved to approve the minutes from. Are all four of these here? Ja- January 23rd, February 27th, April 9th, and May 28th, 2024, as with, with modifications.
Do we have a second? A second?
And then I just wanna speak to that real quick and make sure all four of them are right there, right? Can you guys come? Yeah, okay. I'm looking at them without counting, so.
Roll call voter? Do we, do we just all in favor?
I don't think.
Just all in favor. I don't, no, no. Oh, it's okay. I'm learning. That's good.
Did you call all in favor?
Yes, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, and Jason?
And, and you can oppose, you can ask for oppose and abstentions just to make sure it's a good way to.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Do I have to be abstained from?
Jason, we didn't hear.
Twenty eight since I wasn't present?
We should, Jason, same, do you, do I say?
Did you listen to the meeting?
I did, well, no. It was an opening blow.
You might want to abstain from the votes.
So I'll abstain from the vote on the regular meeting of May twenty.
You can just abstain from the vote altogether. Oh, yeah.
Vote all together.
That way, because we were doing it as a group. Got it, so. Did you catch that, Nick? Yeah. Sorry, we missed that mark. Otherwise, we would have just broken them out separately. Yeah.
Um, okay, next on the agenda, do you have any public comment on non-agenda items?
I don't see any public on board here, but.
No hands raised? Nope, okay. Okay, moving right along. Okay, next on the agenda, chapter seventeen and eighteen code revision updates, potential camp committees ad hoc slash T.
Uh, so this is something that, um, Commissioner Riley wanted to go over, uh, with me and the rest of you as a group. Um, if you were present at the last joint meeting, uh, in the session, we went over all of this kind of
Right.
in succession.
Right.
Uh, but it's still a work in progress. Uh, I actually spoke to Gary about it today. If there was anything else that he would like to add or if he wanted to be present to speak on it.
Okay.
Uh, and, uh, he had told me that we should wait until Shandel gets back, like they said.
Okay.
This is gonna be one of the things on these revisions along with myself and some other members.
Okay.
Which we're trying to get around still.
Right.
Um, so we're gonna wait until she gets back.
Okay.
Uh, and then we can reset and go through, um, how we wanna set it up.
Okay.
So there's really a lot of things to attend to today.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear. So no, no one's been appointed to this committee yet. Nothing has really changed.
None has changed.
Okay. Okay.
Right. Uh, I shared.
Um, I just had a couple of comments and, uh, as far as like it said, like potentially one planning commissioner, maybe, you know, two planning commissioner. Another thing I was talking actually to Joy about this as well is that maybe since it's like it's supposed to be every other week meetings, maybe have at different parts of the, um, the, the chapter seventeen and the eighteenth, maybe have people that are interested in that particular portion or more knowledgeable, be a part of that and, you know, trade off and just like, okay, this is my area I'd like to be a part of and then maybe. Yeah, yeah, with the different planning commissioners, maybe somebody has more of an interest in a certain part and then, you know, somebody else could take over in another part or.
I'm also assuming that what, that it would be open and if we wanted to go and even if we're not on the committee, we can watch, right? It's gonna be an open committee.
I mean, honestly, if you wanna sit down with, uh, with the city attorney. Actually, details.
Right.
From right now.
And I understand what Lisa's trying to say that even though I might be appointed, but she might have more knowledge at that and then could she replace me as the committee?
Yeah, yeah, or just, yeah, just have.
Uh, as bringing in, um, people that are interested or experts.
Right. Yeah.
So I think that would kind of run along. So we could, we could run that by, by the manager when we.
Yeah.
Discuss what Shandel.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I wanted to say I, I got at that last meeting where I was zooming in, the power went out in talent, which I see has made the news appropriately. Um, generator prices are probably up these days. Um, but I, uh, I went back and listened to parts of it and that, and the discussion on this, uh, I was a little confused because, um, it did make, I didn't see how making this a technical advisory committee um, really remove the, um, the, the reporting to the commission. And for that matter, the council, I mean, I, um, I mean, I know, I know what the mayor was saying. I wish she were here to, to answer that. She was saying, well, if you've got a technical advisory committee, they can report to staff. Um, which makes sense to me, but it seems like if you're making titles seventeen and eighteen code revisions and proposals, that is essentially designed to come to the commission before going on to the council with recommendations, which would by default make, make it a, uh, uh, pursuant to the appointment language in the charter. Um, but I also don't see why the mayor couldn't appoint who the mayor wanted to without it being open. So I just had some questions, but I don't know that I'll get those answered tonight. Um, and if she were here, I'd like to ask her that, but, um, I generally, I like the idea and I think it's, uh, the only thing I, that jumped out to me is that, uh, given that there are, quote, there are several other work products in progress that would impact updates to these codes. And the talent urban forestry committee has requested an update to the city tree ordinance, which is incorporated into several different sections of code. If that's gonna be part of this process, should we not offer a member of the urban forestry committee to sit on the, the committee as well?
Um, based on what Gary has said in that, um, paragraph there, I would assume that. Bringing in experts.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, kind of what we talked about, like different interests and different extracurricular needs and different parts of it, not everybody.
Put it in and out.
Right.
I guess it's all kind of.
Okay, I just wasn't, it looked like it was being split up between the regulars and then experts as needed, but they weren't on either one and I, it might, yeah, I just wanted to put a plug in for, because that tree code is, uh, gnarly, to say the least. I mean, it's, yeah, it is, uh, yeah, it's actually makes, I think it makes the Old Town District language look rather pedestrian, so it's so confusing, so.
I can't remember last month, did we have like a goal of like when we wanted this completed? Good date.
Gary had mentioned, um, I think it was. That it was brought up to the end of year this year from Kristen originally, although I don't know when that date was officially set originally and if it ever gotten, it doesn't sound like it ever gotten back. And so Gary was originally going off of that and saying, hey, we should probably bring it up. Do we wanna discuss and go over some of the amendments? And I know some of the amendment processes are included, like I said, uh, we have to integrate the tree code. We have to integrate, um, some of the modular housing for the mass timber amendments. Um, but I mean, I would assume it's probably not gonna be enough.
Yeah.
This has been on the agenda for a long time, so I'd imagine that they didn't change that date, so.
Yeah, I think, uh, when Dick Converse left back in 2021, he sat down with, um, uh, chair glass and they had that on the agenda back then in 2021, so, um, sorry.
It's been on the back for, for a while.
I think that time is right, but I don't, don't quote me on that, so, yeah. Sorry, I should have read.
Yes, you should have.
I apologize. Hey, uh, the other comment I had on this is what is the, the? I, I know that we don't have, um, it says included in the scope of work. Um, do we have, we would, would the idea be that full scope follows up after the formation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda, discussion on street trees.
And that's for me. So, okay, um, yeah, so I, uh, um, I had, uh, when Commissioner Riley was out of town, um, out of the country. I noted, um, several people mentioned to me that, um, that street trees planted at two ten North Pacific Highway um, were not on the approved street tree list. And, um, I reached out to Nick just as through the phone call just to say, hey, heads up. Um, and then, um, hoping that maybe we could get it resolved, um, before uh, the trees got established there and Nick, you.
Be more specific with the address, what, where is it?
Two ten North Pacific Highway is the old Goodnight Inn.
Yes, that's what I thought China is.
And so that was the one that we were.
Yeah.
Where the developer was concerned about planting in the PUE and that discussion ensued. And the whole question was, I'm glad they planted trees. That was awesome. And they planted some oaks on there, which is awesome. But we do have the approved street tree list and they planted these rather diminutive species. Um, and which is what we've tried to get away from, making sure that approved street trees, that list includes trees that are gonna provide really large canopy to help shade the city. Do you have any, uh, update or do?
Um, not from, not from that property specifically, other than I had gotten a response from the developer that they were potentially Eastern Redbuds, uh, which we had discussed. I haven't heard anything since then, so I'm not sure what the process is. I just don't program. There hasn't been a discussion with the developers since then, so it's, it is. Uh, another discussion came out, uh, between Island and Hector's Forest, um, where we had found somebody else had called and they found, found, uh, or a couple of people had called and found they recommended street tree list on our website, which was outdated. Uh, I don't know where exactly that's pulling up from, because it was from the board website. And we had tried to get rid of all of these to that, it's not still coming out. And so we did everything that we could to make sure the approved street tree list currently was up there and available. And then we did sure that we printed out extra problems with that and about, uh, that we know that all is connected with it. So, uh, we're all in step nation, we're actually bringing up that. In all of that, so I'm assuming that's where some of these problems are.
Okay.
So which type of trees do they plant? I, I must thought.
Uh, sounds like it was eastern redbud.
Eastern.
Yeah. Yeah, not really.
So what is our recourse on having them replant?
Well, they would just, they would have to plant approved streets.
Right.
Basically.
And we are gonna make them do that? Is that correct?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
And they, they don't have a C of O yet.
Um, I don't recall.
What was that?
They have.
Certificate.
They have not that specific building. They have the residential.
Right. Well, I don't need to know, you know, I guess the website stuff. Obviously, that's for staff to sort out with them and figure it out, but if, um, especially if it is determined that there was an error on the city's website, uh, maybe touch with urban forestry, you know, to help, uh, just to figure out a remedy, you know? I mean, it's an option for you guys if you want, if not, um, but I'm just glad to hear that it'll be taken care of. I mean, it's, you know, it, it doesn't, it doesn't seem like a big deal right now. But I guarantee you in, in thirty or forty years, it'll be a big deal. I mean, if you've got valley oaks planted there instead of, uh, I mean, it's a big deal. It's like, that's a lot of shade. Uh, shading over, um, on the, from the south onto, onto the parking lot side over there, it's, um, it'll make a huge difference for heat island, uh, issues that I'm sure everybody can appreciate after the heat spell that I missed, so.
Any other comments?
Uh, one more. Uh, so we don't need to, we'll just follow up down the road with you, Nick, on that. So, okay, great, thanks.
Pretty close. Um, propositions and remarks from the commission? I have a question. Um, architectural reviewer, what is the status on getting reports from them or?
Uh, so we have minutes. That was actually my fault. It was actually a, meant to attach the most recent minutes from June, um, on to, here, so you guys can have a little graphic. Um, so I'll just make sure that as per in practice, that city staff, me as planner.
Okay.
Will put the most recent approvals from TARP, um, on to.
So is everyone okay with getting those minutes on the next, with the next agenda packet for?
Starting next time.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, and ongoing.
And ongoing and just have the net, the ones we missed in the next pack. Okay.
And so they're not posted on the website then? Because I thought, yeah.
Oh, they should be on.
Okay, all right. Um. Okay. So you were just gonna email them as well, then, okay. All right, that's funny.
We like that.
I'm just happy to have them online, so thanks.
Yeah.
Um, can I, uh?
Nope.
Or do you have another one?
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so I guess part of this is a question for Nick, if you have any, um, updates from um, applications or what's going on? Is there anything we should be made aware of? And then I'll follow that with, uh, um, I was looking on the website, uh, and I didn't see any new appeals. Do you know of any new appeals or appeals?
No, there's nothing in writing in the segment projects that I have recently.
And you don't anticipate any of that?
I have awareness, okay. Obviously, if we get anything out of the other.
Yeah.
In terms of, uh, TARP, the most recent approvals from this week, which will be at next month's meeting, uh, we, uh, approved, uh, two, uh, new builds, Craftsman style builds at two sixty one Dallas Avenue, two sixty seven Dallas Avenue. So they're actually, they're missing each other.
Yeah.
They submitted, uh, one after the other, the day after the other as well. Uh, but, uh, those were approved, uh, your last month of TARP.
Okay. And then I have one more question that it's probably gonna slip my mind, um.
Can I just ask a question of the?
Yeah.
So that's because they're in the Old Town? Is that why they went there?
Yeah, that, that's.
So consider. Yeah. Yeah.
Because they're just the old house.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So it's kind of funny that the Old Town District map goes further out, almost all the way down the route.
Oh, yeah.
But only extends just on that front.
What's the crush for these? Do you know? You remember?
It's.
Okay, okay. Okay, thanks.
I know, so. The historic home and reconstruction over here, is that still in, in progress or it just looked quiet?
Next to City Hall, that one?
Yeah, next to the Old Town Hall, the.
Oh, that's, we approved that back in July twenty three. He started work in April.
Yeah.
There was something about what he was actually, or maybe so he met TARP again in April. And he discussed that what he's doing still meets TARP standards, but from what I recall from the owner applicant is, he's even behind all some of the work.
Oh.
So they. They all permits for everything, but they have obviously. Got them very close in terms of. They're apart right now. They, they have all the approvals.
Yeah.
It's a big project.
I miss all their stuff that they have, sorry.
You missed what?
All the stuff they have in the yard.
That's quite the undertaking, I'm sure. Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
All right, anybody, any other comments, remarks? We're.
Setting records.
We're adjourned at six fifty eight.